I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 with my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do audio windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINES. Just call. Thank you. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Selectmen Furlong is participating tonight via remote participation in accordance with the requirements of 940 CMR 29.10 by speakerphone, which is in front of his usual place that he speaks. And all votes that are taken during the meeting will be made by roll call. Kind of gonna skip around a little bit tonight because there's a couple of busy schedules here tonight for my first night back. First thing that is gonna be on the agenda is request for appointment to Commission on Disabilities, Andrew Freeman, on 98 Sunset Way. And this is to be considered the vacancy on the Commission for the Disabilities. At the request of the chairman, Tom Weinrich, and there's an email and application, and his term will expire in 2020. So if anybody has any questions or...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I would move to appoint Andrew Freeman of 98 Sunset Way to the Commission on Disabilities for a term to expire 2020.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, and all is in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Roll call.
Oh, excuse me. We have to roll call. Matt, are you for or against Andrew Freeman being appointed?
I'm for.
For, good. Ken?
Aye. Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
And I will do that. So that will be unanimous. So you would welcome aboard Andrew Freeman, and great to see more people jumping in. Hope of your time. Next thing on the agenda would be to... We have a request from the Herring Fisheries Commission to appoint Gino Fellini of 239 Oldham Street and Joshua Rosario of 67 Grove Street. And one of their terms will expire on 2019 for Mr. Gino. And the appointment on Joshua would be an alternate vacancy on the Herring Fisheries Commission to expire on 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to appoint Gino Fellini to the vacancy on the Herring Fisheries Commission, term to expire 2019, and to appoint Joshua Rosario to the alternate vacancy on the Herring Fisheries Commission, term to expire 2020.
Second. Matt, did you hear that?
Yep, heard it.
And are you for or against?
For.
For.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and I would say yes. Both of them are gonna be very good additions to the Herring Fisheries Commission. Mr. Fellini has already helped in a number of different ways so far with some of the Commission members. And the other appointment, Joshua Rosario, has had visions of going on the environmental police at some time in the future, so he would be also a good person to be on the fisheries. The other thing I'd just like to say briefly is that we have a really overabundance of fish this year. Where this morning's count was almost 40,000 fish that came up within the last two days, and the day before that there was almost 20,000. And most of the streams and the brooks and the areas near the ladders are pretty loaded up with fish, and the division feels that we're probably gonna exceed our limit that we had from last year. So it's going very good, so. Consider a draft the Selectmen's report on proposed contingency budget, and that's something that you and Mike Parkman would either wanna talk about tonight.
Yeah, you know, Mr. Buckley is in the audience here. He and I can both explain. Basically, we'll run through this when town moderator shows up.
He has arrived.
He has arrived?
Yeah.
All right. So we'll explain this report. Actually, it'll be self-explanatory when we run through how we're gonna work the proposed contingency, the FY '19 budget and the contingency budget as well. We had a conference call with town council, moderator, Mr. Buckley, and myself on Friday.
Okay. So we wanna put that off until, I don't know, after the 7:30? Is that what the advisory committee is on at 7:30? And then this will come on right after that, I would imagine? Let's just finish up these other reviews here. There's a vote the minutes of April 2, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board accept the minutes of the Selectmen's meeting of April 2, 2018, as written.
Second. Matthew?
I vote for.
For.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, so that would be all for. And we also have the minutes of April 9.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board accept the minutes of the Selectmen's meeting of April 9, 2018, as written.
Second. Okay, Matthew?
I vote yes.
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 And yes, so that would be all in favor. On April 9.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a quick comment about the minutes of April 2. That was the meeting where we had the Plymouth County folks come in and explain the investing of the town's money, and it was a very in-depth discussion. And I would just like to commend Sabrina on how she had written that up. Thank you.
Okay. So do we have any old business? None? Town administrator?
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer mine to the end of the meeting so that we can get started with the other presentations that are coming up.
Okay. So there's... I got a couple of different dates on the times here, so the advisory committee wants to do 7:30, so the joint meeting between advisory committee and moderator and town meeting, does that wanna go next?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I don't think this will be too long. And I appreciate this opportunity, as we always do, and I think it's very beneficial, just to kind of go over procedure prior to the meeting. And as I always say, prior to these meetings, that for those who are watching or listening at home, this is not an attempt to preordain or determine an outcome. That's always up to the meeting. It's just to determine a procedure and a process so that we can come to an outcome eventually. But any final vote is up to the meeting. But I think it's important to kind of go over the script ahead of time just to make sure that we're all on the same page with regard to the procedure. I think it's gonna be a very interesting and busy meeting. I'm hoping we can start as close to 7:00 as possible, so I ask those that are watching and listening at home, hopefully they'll all be attending the meeting to get there early so they can check in and be seated in time, as we do at every annual meeting. There's a number of kind of ceremonial things we do prior to the start of the actual business, so I'd like to try to start that as close to possible, as close to 7:00 o'clock as possible. And we've got 25 articles. 10 of those are one article, the CPC articles, and then another five in the special. Obviously, there's a lot of interest in the budget, and in past years, the budget has been pretty much of a slam dunk, not all that controversial. This year, I suspect there'll be a lot more debate than there has been in previous years, which is a good thing. So I guess, as we always do, I'll just go through the articles one by one and just kind of outline the procedure as I see it, and advisory to jump in. I think this is the first time we've actually gotten consent since the second time, well, at any rate. We passed a bylaw a couple of years ago that allows us to do a consent calendar, and that... There are certain articles that are just routine. I've never heard debated, and we decided to kind of group those together into one vote. But again, it's up to the meeting to decide if someone wants to pull one of those articles out and debate it separately, they're more than welcome to do that. But the board, your board, Mr. Chairman, has put four articles together as one, and that's Article 1, which is just to hear the town reports, and Article... And this is all in the front of the warrant, so for people who have printed the warrant at home or take a hard copy of it, they'll see this. There's actually five articles. Article 1, which is to act on the reports. Article 6, which authorizes Selectmen to accept federal estate grants. Article 9, which allows the Board of Selectmen to enter into construction agreements. Article 23 is a CPC article that is fairly routine in the sense that I think by law we have to appropriate those amounts every year from CPC. So I don't expect any debate on that. And Article 26, which is the one that allowed... The election is actually part of the warrant, so it's always on there even though you don't technically have to vote on it. So we'll do all those together, and assuming advisory will make a motion, and we'll try to dispose of those at one time. So save us a few minutes, anyway. Article 2 is the wage and personnel classification, which is in Appendix D in the back of the warrant, and I'm assuming it's gonna be moved as printed in the warrant, no changes?
One change.
One change?
No.
Okay. Someone?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. And obviously, the meeting is welcome to change it if they want. Someone wants to amend it, they can. That doesn't usually happen, but they can certainly do that. So as we always do, we'll do each section, appointed, elected, part-time, full-time, we'll do those separately. Article 3 is the... I skipped over the budget, didn't I? Article 3 is actually...
3 is the budget.
3 is in the budget, yeah. I went to 4. I'm sorry. Yeah, 2 is the wage and personnel, 3 is the budget. And we'll go by department by department, as we always do. And I'm not sure whether advisory wants to make a presentation prior to the budget, or if that's yet to be determined, or... Yeah. Prior to the meeting, prior to the budget. Yeah, that makes sense. So there are five line items that are gonna be subject to a... The motion will be that the higher amount will be subject to a proposition override. And I'm assuming that has the support of the board and as well as advisory. Advisory will make what we call a contingency motion, which is, it'll be a higher figure, and all this is, again, printed in the warrant, subject to an override. So the way it would work is if, and I'm kind of doing this for the benefit of people who may be watching or listening at home, the higher amount, these amounts will all be together, five separate questions, is that correct, on the ballot on the following Saturday?
One question.
Five items, one question. So it's just one question. So is it all or nothing? Okay. So the motion by advisory will be the higher amount subject to the override. If the override passes, then the higher amount passes. If it doesn't, then the lower amount passes. If that motion by advisory, which is the contingency, put the additional amount, the higher amount, subject to proposition two and a half override, fails, then advisory will move the lower figure. Now, the thing that I want to mention, and again, I think you'll explain this more in the next, in the presentation, but the thing that I want everyone to be clear about is that, I know there's been a lot of thought gone into these figures and the suggestion of an override, but all of this is up to the meeting. The figures, the motion, how much goes is subject to an override, how much isn't, is all subject to a meeting, is subject to the meeting itself to decide. So any of these are amendable, within reason. And I wanna make sure people know that, because I think it's important. They can amend it within reason. There are consequences, both financial consequences and procedural consequences to amending these motions, but they can be done. And as you mentioned, Ed, we had a meeting, conference call Friday, to discuss procedure, and a lot of that discussion was about what if there are amendments on the floor, because it's up to the town meeting to decide. So those five line items are the line items that are in the police budget, the fire budget, and the DPW budget. Right? So I'll just leave it at that. Advisory will make the motion. They'll make, if the first motion fails, they'll make a second motion, but any of those motions are subject to amendment from the floor. So that's the budget. Article 4 is to raise and appropriate money to establish the Water Enterprise Fund and operate the Water Enterprise Fund. That's submitted to Appendix B, which is in the back of the warrant. That's usually fairly routine. Article 5 is the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, establishing and appropriating from that. That's Appendix C. Article 6 is, I realize if you don't have the warrant in front of you, this may be a little difficult to follow, but Article 6 is one of the ones that we, the routine articles in the consent calendar. Article 7 is to establish, in perpetuity, right, the revolving funds, there's about a dozen or so of them. And as my understanding is, we can do this once, and then we don't have to do this again?
This portion of the bylaw.
Yeah, because every year, there's an article in the budget that establishes all these, and we do it every year. So these would be established in perpetuity, and then we wouldn't have to do this again in town meetings.
Just at the moment.
At the moment, right, yeah. So that's Article 7. Advisory will move that, right? I'm assuming all these advisory will move up to this point. Article 8 sets up a revolving fund, more revolving funds, right? Oh, this sends up the funding, I'm sorry. This is the funding for the revolving funds that we theoretically set up in the first of Article 7. So we may wanna think about postponing Article 8 that comes up before Article 7?
Somewhat you move 7.
8, 9.
9, we would have done as part of 7 and 8, yeah, okay. Article 10, maybe, Ed, if you could explain this a little bit, there may be some questions about this. It's an article submitted by the Board of Selectmen that sets up a payment in lieu of taxes program for a certain parcel.
Yeah. It appears that the Brigham and Women's Physician Organization is gonna buy four acres of land at Corporate Park, and they're gonna build a 30,000-square-foot building. Some are, part of it is gonna be taxable, some may not. So that's gonna be determined by the Board of Assessors. And if that is the case, where a bulk of the property isn't taxable, then the Selectmen then would be authorized to enter into a pilot or a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. I think Brigham and Women's is proposing to call it a community services agreement, and that's to be negotiated, you know, with the chief assessor and myself and the Board of Selectmen. But this authorizes the Selectmen, if they need to, enter into a payment in lieu of taxes, but that's first gonna be determined by the Board of Assessors about whether all the property or part of the property is tax exempt.
And everyone's moving favorable action, right, both for Selectmen and advisory? Who would be the appropriate one to make the motion?
We can do it, Mr. George.
The board wanna make the initial motion, or advisory?
Well, I can.
No.
We can do it. We can speak on it. Well, the Selectmen can make it.
For continuity, it might be best if the advisory committee take it.
Okay. Just to put it on the floor, that's all.
Anything that you folks all felt comfortable with, we will take.
Yep.
Okay. Article 11 is allowing us to forego some small amounts of personal property taxes adopting this section of the Mass General laws. Everyone's in favor of that? Advisory move that one? Okay. Article 12, submitted by advisory, and you'll move that. It just makes it easier to get a quorum and operate, essentially, right? Paraphrasing, over-simplifying, I should say, but... Okay. Article 13, routine article, $5,000 for Sessor Community Action Council, advisory will move that. Article 14, authorizing Recreation Department to hire a part-time senior clerk. Advisory's recommending against it.
Recreation.
Yeah. So Recreation will have put that on the floor? Article 15 is an increase in the general reference librarian position, or just to fund it, I'm sorry.
We'd increase the number of hours that that person works.
Oh, that's right, okay. All right, so it's amending the wage and personnel classification scale, which we would have voted on already. Is advisory?
Advisory vote.
Okay. Deborah? Has advisory taken a position on that yet? Not yet, okay. And Article 16, okay. So Articles 16 and 17 are kind of, to a certain extent, a redo of the budget items. 16 is the fire department's positions, two positions, and 17 is the two positions for the police department. Now, my understanding is, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, if the contingency article passes, then we just need to act on these articles to establish the positions.
That's right.
Okay. If they do not pass, then it's fair game. So I don't know what the chiefs wanna do if they, I mean, it's an open book, essentially. You can start the debate over again, you can, I mean, it's... So those are the options. And we can, it's a separate article, so we can re-debate the whole issue again, if you want. I mean, the town council, there's nothing that says we can't do that, so it's your call if you wanna move it or whatever. For Article 18, which is to fund police cruises, and Article 19, which is to fund a pavement program for the DPW, those items are also one of the ones that we will have voted on that is contingent upon the two and a half override. And if the contingency passes, then there is no need for Article 18 or 19. If it does not pass, then we can take it up again, right?
Correct.
And it's up to the DPW and, again, Chief Wall, whether you wanna take it up again. So Article 20 is appropriating money for a Ludham's Ford, improvements to Ludham's Ford Dam, and has advisory taken a position yet?
We're willing to let the DPW.
Okay. So we're not up to DPW. And it is a borrowing authorization, so it requires a two-thirds vote. Article 21 is to establish a town manager form of government, and this has been submitted by the Town Government Study Committee. So I'm not sure whether the board, who wants to make the motion to put it on the table? Is it Tim Brennan from the...
Tim.
Okay, all right, we'll touch bases with him. Has advisory made a recommendation, which is favorable?
I could speak to that.
That's right, you're on.
I'm on it.
You're on it, yeah.
Tim is chairman, will make the motion.
Okay, all right. Article 22 is to create a capital projects fund stabilization, a capital project stabilization fund, advisory will move favorable action, and that requires a two-thirds vote as well. Article 23, we would have disposed of as part of the consent article. Article 24 are the 10 different recommendations from CPC. I won't go through each and every one of them, but is there any that advisory does not recommend favorable action?
We're not able to have anyone represent the CPC come to us, and we're gonna have to go with town.
Okay, all right. Board support all the items?
We do.
And then Article 25 is a petition article by Claude Demaiso, making some changes to the right to farm.
Yeah.
And you wanna move that? Since it's a petition. Advisory, have they taken a position?
Yeah.
Is the board taking a position?
The town.
All right. And the last one is the, again, the warrant. So that's the annual. Did I miss anything? Okay. And the special is five articles. Article 1, and again, this is moving existing funds. We're not raising and appropriating any money from tax levy. All that money's already been raised for these special articles. Article 1 just funds a number of different departments, and advisories would move that one. Article 2 is to pay an unpaid bill. Advisory move that one, requires a nine tenths. Article 3 is to repair storm damage to town buildings. That's borrowing, is advisory taking a position?
I don't think so.
Okay. So who's gonna move that one, then?
Who's gonna move it?
Favorable action? That requires a two-thirds. Article 4, DPW, dump truck plow sander from water surplus. Advisory committee is recommending favorable action, you'll move that one. And Article 5 is new water main on Montclair Avenue to be funded from water surplus. You folks will move that one. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I just urge everyone to get there early and to get there. It's an important town meeting. And we need everyone's attendance. We can dispose of it in one evening. So thank you.
Thank you for coming and explaining that. Almost 7:30. Is the advisory committee finance presentation ready to go forward?
Good evening. My name is Linda Peterson, and I'm chairman of the advisory committee. And I'd like to welcome everybody that's here and on TV to the second annual advisory committee, specifically to discuss the financial state of the town of Pembroke as to how we got where we are and why. And we thought it was a good time to have this just before town meeting, which I like to remind people is next Tuesday at the town hall, at the high school, at 7:00. And we're hoping that all the registered voters in town will attend. We picked this particular time and location because we knew that... We picked this particular time and location because we knew that it would be part of the Board of Selectmen meeting and also some of the town officers would be here so that any questions either that have been raised through something that the moderator said or something that may come up with what we're discussing it. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Steve Curley, who's the vice chair of the Advisory Committee for our presentation. And then we'll follow it up with any questions, concerns, comments.
Good evening.
Evening.
We did this last year. It was very, very positively received, so we are repeating it. And it may become the annual if people really like it. It gives us a little more in-depth and it provides people with a better chance to ask questions because when you get to town meeting, you sort of feel like you want to get the business taken care of. And you don't necessarily spend the time asking questions. So anyway, I'll get right down to it here. I want to just go over a few things here. I do want to point out, you can see here that the general government, as a percentage of the budget, went from 3.39 to 3.22. People always say, you know, if you're going to redo something, why don't you cut the general government or whatever? In general, as you can see, it's really been bare bones. We've done practically nothing here. And it's really pretty well the smallest part of the budget overall. Public safety, as you can see, has gone from 11.11 to 12.29 over the past 10 years. The town has made a commitment to that, and it shows in the funding. And it's been increased at an average of above 5.5 percent a year. The schools have dropped down to 53.9 percent of the budget. And that's something that I will go into a little more detail as we go through the presentation. The other major factor, of course, is benefits and insurance. It's something we've been discussing for years. But you can see that that's been going up at 7.2 percent a year. It's gone from 18 to 22 percent of the budget. So it's really one of the significant factors. It's something we have virtually no control over. On the revenue side, I really want to start out with the second line, the state aid. The state aid actually has dropped from 32.88 to 25.21 percent of our budget. It's going up as, over the last 10 years, only 5 percent in the 10 years. That's 0.5 percent a year in the increase in that. What happened there was a few years back, they redid the lottery aid formula, and we had a significant drop. At this point in time, we're still $354,000 a year less in lottery aid than we were 10 years ago. So that's had a significant impact in what we've been able to do. It's when you really think of it, even if taxes are going up and, you know, whatever else we can raise, to have something that was a third of the budget go down to a quarter in revenue is a significant drop. That's made things quite a bit difficult over the past 10 years. So, you know, obviously, what's happened here is that property taxes have been going up as a percentage of the revenue from 59 to 64 percent. And then, you know, you have other available funds, which it's, you know, that's, free cash has increased, and I'll talk about that in a little while. School construction funds, school athletic funds, the COA transportation, indirect water funds, those are some of the major aspects of that. And of course, local receipts. I'll get into that in a few minutes. I did want to point out that the state aid by town, if you take a look at that, we're actually not in too bad a shape relative to most of the towns around here. It's not as easy to compare. Halifax, Plimpton, Kingston, Hanson, and Whitman are all part of regional school systems. And the school aid, Chapter 7 money bypasses the town, goes direct to the regional school district. So you can see why some of those have very low, like Hanson, $129 state revenue per capita. The other thing is, I threw Brockton in there as comparison. They sort of make everything else pale. You know, they take up quite a bit of money there. The excise taxes is one of the major factors in terms of free cash that we've had and such. And you can see that there was a period in 2009, 10, 11, even into '12, that it was really a flat or down item. And that was, of course, right after 2008. And finally, as you get into 2013 and '14, people started buying cars again. It's really the main part of that. But it is a major factor to consider. Then the total local receipts, again, it went through that phase primarily because of the excise tax. And that brings us to what happens with the free cash and the snow and ice deficit. Historically, over the past eight, nine years, it's been fairly close. You see in 2011, the difference between the free cash and the snow and ice was only $223,000. And in 2015, we had a bad winter. And you can see that the snow and ice deficit topped over $1 million. It's obviously an extreme number, but it's something that you have to be aware. It gets possible. And hopefully, we don't get another 10 feet of snow anytime soon. Except for my wife's helping for it. The other part of it is, you can see that the free cash, you know, it's been bouncing up and down, a little bit down in the last year and such. And one of the things that we have here is that the local receipts that we did in the budget in 2017 to 2018, we added the solar and things to the budget for revenue. But we increased the budget for the local receipts by about $785,000. And in reality, that $785,000 was free cash in 2017. It's not going to be there in the future. And that's a significant sum, especially when you consider that the free cash at the end of the town meeting is projected to be about $70,000. And the current snow and ice deficit is already $451,000. So those are pretty significant factors. And the other part of it is the use of free cash to balance the budget. Over the past few years, you can see that we went up to $600,000 in this past year. And that's really going to be difficult to maintain. Again, it's the snow and ice deficit over the past few years has been 685,101,000 and 637,000. 2017 was down to 523,000. So you've got to count on $600,000 to $700,000 really at an average for the deficit over the past few years. And the free cash is going to be squeezed in the next couple of years. One of the other ways that we did, I did a comparison of 24 towns in the area and took a look at what we pay in terms of percentage of budget, where we are in it. You can see that the police and fire, the police is just a little bit over, and the fire department is almost right on the average and the median. So about half the towns spend less than us and about half more in the police and fire. So, you know, it is something that we have, you know, increased significantly over the past few years. In the bottom one, it's the per capita. The police at 191 is a little bit below the average of 197, so it's, but it's close per capita. Fire, 169 versus 179 average. Again, it's fairly close, and we're not too far off from the median. The education, we spent 53 percent in 2016. That's, I meant to mention, this is 2016, which is the latest. I could get the comparisons through the state website on these. The average was 49 percent and the median 49 percent. So the schools, we're actually doing a little bit better, spending a little more, even though it's come down as a percentage of the town budget. In 2016, per capita, we've spent $1,615 in education versus an average of 1585, or a median of 1557. So it's really, you know, we have had a lot of money go in there. And a part of that, of course, is we did have the override of 1.3 million a couple of years ago, which pushed that up. Public works, I know the DPW commissioner's going to love to see this, were way below other towns in percentage and in dollars in what we're spending in public works. 3.37 to a median of 4.87. $102 versus a median of 143 per capita. So that's, that is, I guess, if they say that we haven't treated them as fairly as they want, I think that they have some justification. Fixed costs were higher than it, and that part of that is that probably about two-thirds of the towns in this region pay the 75 percent of the health care and the other third are at 50 percent. So it's, you know, it's, we're at the 75, so we're ahead of the average and above median on it. But that's because of the health care costs. And I know a lot of people, they look at the budget in and of itself, and they say, you know, well, look at the debt service. It's a killer. But the debt service is actually less than the average and less than the median. And last week, the presentation that was made by the professor from UMass also noted that our debt service was lower than what they actually recommend and so forth, and that it's, that is well below. The other thing I want to say is, you know, a lot of people, they say, oh, we're a high-tax town. We're high this, we're high that. Our actual total expenditures in Pembroke per capita is 3,047. The median is 3,056. That means that there's more than half the towns spend more than we do. And the average is 3,197, so some spend quite a bit more. So we actually are in the lower half of spending in a town. So that's, you know, when you're really looking at that, that's a major item. When people, you know, when they see their tax bill, they always think that's, you know, it's crazy, where's all this money going? But we're actually spending less than most and such. The, and the bottom of this didn't quite come through. The school enrollment is an issue. And when I mentioned before that the school, as a percentage of the budget, has been coming down, you can look at the enrollment over the last 10 years, from 2008 to 2017. What's on the bottom, it's not quite shown on that slide, is the percentages in the total. Since 2008, the total enrollment is down 603, which is a 17.61 percent drop. But the K through 6 is down 522. That's almost all of it. And that's a 27.03 percent drop in the K through 6 enrollment. Whereas the middle school and high school is down 81 through this period, which is only 5.43 percent. But of course, what's happening, and you can see, as the enrollment went down in the elementary school level, it fed into the high school. And that actually increased for a few years. But in, from, you know, 2016 and 17, you see the two lines have combined. They're both dropping. And it's essentially, as the elementary level gets into the high school, it starts to force that down. The total enrollment has gone down from, you know, it's a large drop. And this feeds into the fact that, as I mentioned earlier, the percentage of the school budget to the town has gone down. And, you know, this is a big part of why. The obvious thing is, is as the number of pupils goes down, the state aid goes down because that is based on number of pupils. And obviously, when you have, you know, a 25 percent drop, you know, you read a few things. Some people complaining about some teachers being let go in an elementary level. I think it was six this year. And it's one of these things that the trend is going to really have to continue, and it's just based on numbers. And over the next few years, this is going to work its way through the junior high and the high school. And, you know, it's just something that's, you know, we all know that Hanson, for instance, they're combining both their elementary schools into one for the same reason. There's a significant drop in enrollment in the area. So, you know, in the future, the amount that we're putting into the schools as a percentage is going to be dropping continuously simply based on numbers. It's not that we're anti-education. It's just we don't have the students there anymore. Another thing I just want to point out, you can see Pembroke's stabilization. It's better than a number of places, but there's a lot of them that have a lot more in there. You know, Plymouth is obviously a much bigger town and so forth. But it's, a lot of them have more money in their savings than what we do. And that is a little bit of a concern overall. And on a more positive note, the unemployment figure in Pembroke over the past few years is actually declining quite a bit. It's good to see that, you know, we have a lot of people working, although hopefully, they're all in full employment as opposed to just the small stuff. So that is a quick overview of where we are. And we're open to questions and anything in more detail that we want. It's up to you now.
Steve, can we just go back to the enrollment? I do think there are a couple of things. When you write, enrollments have dropped, they have not dropped down to 22,000 change students. Far closer to about 30,000.
Well, I took this straight out of the town report.
Thank you. Right, you know, Steve is right that in the case of enrollment, enrollments have gone down. It is important, though, when we're thinking out, right? Because one of the things we got to get better about, and I think Steve and the team have been really good about this, is not thinking about this this year, but the next four, five years down the road. Our enrollments and our kindergarten enrollments have started to stabilize today. So we can't just assume that we're going to have this continuous downward trend for how the graph, the graph is basically portraying number one. I also think from a funding perspective, funding for the schools is mainly around personnel and staffing. Right? So while we were able to cut six positions this year mainly because of enrollment reduction reductions, it doesn't mean that if you lose 20 kids, you can lose a teacher. Or if you lose 30 kids, you can lose a teacher. It's just, you know, because unfortunately, there's 20 or 30 kids. They're spread out throughout 12 grades and multiple, you know, multiple grades.
Well, you also have three schools that are going.
That's right.
We discussed that at that meeting. So it might only be a few in the first grade, you know, five in each.
Correct.
What do you do?
That's right.
But as, you know, if the trend were to continue, and I did try, and through various places, I tried to get birth rates, but there was nothing from, I mean, it was like seven or eight years old. So I couldn't get anything that would be more current that might shed more light into it. I don't know if you have those available, and, you know, it'd be interesting to see. Because that's what will feed into the kindergarten in a few years.
And I'm happy, like the superintendent asked, we did do a refresh on the enrollment study. We do it every couple of years as part of our own fiscal planning and our own due diligence, which is why I'm just cautioning folks, because I don't want you to think that, you know, we're going to all of a sudden go from 28,000 is... that, you know, we're gonna all of a sudden go from 28,000, which is what's projected, and it'll be really around 3,000. So the curve is nowhere near that steep, but 3,000 down all the 72700 in a couple of years, and that will result in 15% savings on $34 million, because reality is, it's just economically, realistically, and how the staffing and the flex and the dollars work, it just, that doesn't work. The other thing, too, that we all, we need to be very cognizant of, well, with Hanson, they do a combination on schools and in physical bricks and mortar. Pembroke has an issue with our three elementary schools, where we built two elementary schools that could house over 900 kids, and one small school, meaning Habalak, that houses about 550. As a result of that, it's very difficult to combine schools, right? We've even come so far as to look at, could the junior high school be put into Habalak? Could you then turn on and sell the junior high school in order to generate capital? Unfortunately, the economic build-out and the money that you'd have to put in to make that happen would be very difficult. Also, the one school that you may be able to, that you would potentially be able to give up would be Habalak, which is right across from the high school, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense, just from what I've located. So I just wanna make sure we're clear on that, that's all.
And I didn't see it, but it would be interesting to see, and maybe...
Please identify yourself.
This lady needs no introduction. Yes, my name is Libby Bates, 115 Washington. I just had a question, and maybe it's a question Patrick can answer, but do you have any data showing the trending of cost per student? And that'd be interesting, because I know for many, many years, Pembroke was always marginally on the low side. And with the increasing enrollment and the budgetary situation, is that number gonna go up?
So I'm Erin O'Beas, my tenant, we don't have a Pembroke address, so I'm not gonna give a hint. I think for the past eight or nine years, we know that there are people spending a certain amount of money here, and the cover covers around the lower, between eight or less. There's eight or nine communities that spend less for people than we do. And the past two years, it's gone slightly because of the override. So we're around the condition of sports community that's spent less than we, 250,000 to 86, but I don't expect it to go much higher.
Out of 300, would you...
So out of 351 schools, there's only about 331 were born on the community, including us.
It's always been as a parent of poor children that grew up in town, went to the schools, the cost per pupil expenditure has always been a little on, on the especially cheap side, and it would be nice to see that go up.
I think we said it in relation to the categories, whether it's supply materials, salaries, we're making it from the buildings, and I think any of the categories we tend to cover much lower than our primary communities, but I think it is testament to what we're able to offer to our students at the level of people who are as kind of me as we can get.
So we're on that.
I'm on it.
Bob?
Someone else who needs no introduction.
Bob DiMarzio, stage stuff, and, so, when we talk about decreasing enrollment, one might initially think, "Well, you're gonna save 100 cents on the dollar," and that can be offset other additional costs. But the reality is, as you said, incorrect and wrong, state aid drops. So it's really not a huge windfall as our overall...
No, it's, you know, state aid is about half of the funding for education right now.
Literally, it's just over half.
It's just over half. So when we drop a student, we're dropping half of our revenue relative to that student.
Then there's a drag on the budget because you have unemployment costs. So any savings that really put off on us to the following year, plus unemployment...
Because, yes, it's, you know, you have some savings in healthcare costs, you know, if you're paying that, and then there's unemployment costs and such, and it depends on whether they get another job and such. I know that in 2003, when we had the $2,357,000 cut to state aid, that's been burning in my head, we had a lot of layoffs in schools and police, fire, DPW, I mean, there was a lot of cutbacks all over the time. And the unemployment came in really within a few months, about, probably about half of the town jobs elsewhere. Whether it's in a town or not, you know, but, so the unemployment wasn't so bad as we feared at the time when we were budgeting for it. But that's, that just depends, I mean, if all of the area, if you lay off a teacher and all of the schools in the area are facing the same thing, that teacher's not gonna be able to find a job in the area. You know, it's, so you really can't say one way or the other.
A lot of things. It's been valuable, too, and I want to commend everybody for what you've done. Snow and ice, when you start doing your projections, are you using last year's numbers, some kind of average, or just wishing and praying?
Well, as you know, one of the things with the snow and ice is, it's an area that can, during the year, they can overspend at will. Basically, when they need it, they can spend it. It is really the only thing that I can think of in the budget that you can overspend without going to the town meeting, et cetera. So traditionally, and we're not the only town, we've underfunded it. And, you know, I know that the town accountant has made a recommendation, and I know that the professor that came in last week made a similar recommendation. If you look at his information, of increasing that, like 25,000 a year in the budget, start getting more realistic. Try and see where that was in the, you know, you can see here, we've had some, you know, over the past few years, it's been a significant number. And as I mentioned before, it's well over, what it is now, was 457, was it? 451,000 as of, as of right now, and what's, knock on wood, that we don't get anymore. At this point in time, I'm ready for spring. But, yeah, it's a significant figure as to what, well, by the way, that's total spending there, not the deficit, it's, the 523 is total. So this year is actually slightly up from last year in terms of our total expenditures. And this is a comparison of cost per mile to a number of towns that was started back in 2014, and I've been keeping it going and keeping that statistic.
Well, ask a question, right? So July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, do you know what you're looking at with the budget? Have you looked at the following year and given any projections?
Well, the interesting thing is, it's, you know, we've, we haven't done a real in-depth ourselves into that, but Professor Cirillo came in from UMass, and he gave a nice presentation last week. I hope everyone got a chance to see it. And he was projecting out five years as to what's gonna happen, and he gave some guidelines on that and what we can do and what some recommendations are. Obviously, you know, he was showing like a million-dollar deficit for next year, but that's increasing a lot of other things in terms of, you know, fixed assets and things like that, that you have a decision to make on it rather than just spend it and try and get it into shape. But he gave a nice, he developed a nice tool that can now be used, can be updated every year, and we're not gonna be able to get an idea of what we're doing, where we're going, where we have to look at, and what we have to do in the future, whether we have to start to look at whether we're gonna need cutbacks because we just can't get this or that, if we find other sources of revenue and how we approach it. He also makes sure that the plan includes the funding for the OPEB and includes funding for, you know, several other things like that. So it was, it was very, very good, very thorough, and, you know, I really enjoyed listening to you last week. I'm a numbers geek. Some people did, I thought it had as much fun. Anyone else have any questions?
Mariana Robinson, I have 31 Leslie Street. And what I would like to know is, I don't see too many unfavorable things in there from the advisory board. So if everything that the advisory board has voted favorable on goes through, how much spending are we talking about? I know you think that happens.
Well, the budget itself, if the overrides go through, the budget will be 63,179,460.
But that's, you don't have that much.
Well, that would be with the override going through. If the override does not go through, the budget is 62,471,460.
And will that be within the budget, or...
That is, we're using about $600,000 in one-time money for that. There's a Civil Lake withdrawal fund that we used about $98,000 of that and $500,000 of free cash. As of this point, if everything goes through like this, we'll have $70,000 in free cash and $94,000 left in that Civil Lake withdrawal fund. And that's essentially our savings coming out of this town meeting. It's not much, not at all.
Your bond rate, it affects your bond rate?
It can seriously affect the bond rate.
So my question is, why did you say, why did you vote against the...
One of the things we've done in the past few years is, in some of this, in some discussions with Ed and Mike, we've yelled at them for using it, et cetera and so forth, seeing what we can do to influence it. But we, we have made a concerted effort, especially with the budget, to go in with a unified figure. It's, it was, what, about seven years ago, we went in with a double figure, and it was, you know, it was confusing, you know, it was a nightmare in town meeting when we did it, and no one knew what was going on, and we just ended up voting the higher figure anyway. But it was a very confusing meeting, and it was one that, you know, there was one time, there was a proposal to use some stabilization to balance the budget, and we flat out, you know, dragged our feet, and that was withdrawn. So we've made it known, and again, I'm letting everyone know, the use of free cash is, it's pretty well the worst thing you can possibly do to balance a budget. It is, as I said, we've got 600,000 in one-time money out there, and at this point in time, we've got about, about 160,000 in savings going into next year. And as I mentioned earlier, we had about $800,000 that we increased budgets that are gonna negatively impact free cash this year. I'm not gonna project what the free cash is, per se, but the last I heard was, you know, excise taxes coming in about the same as last year, and that's one of the major factors. So I'm looking for a serious drop in free cash this year, how much I don't know.
And I have one more question, some things to be very involved in the law. We always used to say that, you know, this would be an override. I don't see anywhere in here that tells anybody that there's an override. You know, I know you have it broken down, broken down to three different things. Now, if, I'm kind of confused, if one of these passes at town meeting, for the police, and the other one's still, then, then what? Then, then you have something on the ballot that doesn't coincide with what the vote is voting for at town meeting?
Well, first of all, the best way to look at it is, if you look, if you have the warrant and you look at the budget, you see that there's the town administrator and then contingent. The contingent has those higher numbers in there. That is the one that's contingent on the override, those specific numbers. Legally, if the override passes at the ballot, then we are authorized to spend that money. If it does not pass in the town meeting, that money is still authorized for a year? I think it's, we can come back in the fall and take it up again, I think. Is that correct?
I think Mike will add the answer to that.
That's correct.
Yeah. So you've, you've got, the ballot question is an authorization to raise taxes, and that is a separate function from the actual spending of them. And I would caution that, once that's authorized, the contingent budget, if it does not pass, at the fall town meeting, I believe we could spend on to something different, can't we?
Well, you could, town meeting could, or else, if town meeting chose to follow to the rule of the electorate, I guess, the assessors could also choose not to add that to the list.
Yeah. Well, they would not add it unless there was, there was a spending authorization that would force it to be done, yeah. Okay, I'll go with Ben.
Thank you. Ben Bastin, I have two questions. One, I'm still not clear on the answer to her question. If one of these three override articles do not pass town meeting floor, then what are we voting on when we go to an override?
The override is a single question, the decision was made by the Board of Selectmen to go with the single question. So the override will authorize the raising of taxes by the $700,000 and change. Whether or not it has been authorized to spend, the taxes can, are available. If, for instance, it's the DPW one that doesn't, because it's an even number, 300,000, that's the only reason I'm picking it.
No, that's fine.
If that doesn't pass now, the authorization for the revenue is there, and that can be brought up in the fall to spend that 300,000 again at a special town meeting.
But if the taxpayers don't vote for it on town meeting floor, how does it get in the override?
If they...
I mean, what...
Essentially, they've got a $700,000 override. If a 300,000 does not pass, they're only gonna raise the taxes by the 400,000 because you don't have the spending for it.
And the second question is, why are we making this so complicated? Why don't we just do like we've always done and say, "Okay, here's, here's your five questions, and here's your override, and we got articles on the floor, we got two-thirds votes, we got people..." I mean, there's, there's a few of us here who still really don't understand. I don't know how you can have an override question that's gonna involve five questions and three of them don't pass town meeting floor, but they're on the override, but the money's not gonna get appropriated. The people don't know what they're voting for.
That's, that's possible.
I mean, why do we, why do we do, why is this so complicated? Why can't we just simplify it?
The decision, the decision as to how it would be presented to the ballot was a decision that the Board of Selectmen made. I was not at the meeting, so I'm not gonna speak to it on it. I don't know if somebody wants to speak to it.
I'll speak to it at the end of the day.
Yeah, sure. So to make it less complicated, Board of Selectmen have one ballot question, less complicated than five. To make it less complicated, we have two budgets on the town meeting floor, two. One is the level funded, the, one is the regular budget that does not allow the sector spending, and the second one is contingent budget that allows for the extra spending for 204,000 for the police, 204,000 for firefighters, and the 300,000 for the DPW. So it's not complicated, there's one ballot question, and... So, it's not complicated, there's one ballot question and two auctions at town meeting, three total.
Hold on. And then you have three questions at town meeting that apply to those two articles that go into that one override for one question for people to vote on?
No, no, no.
Well, you do. You've got, go ahead.
If the, first of all, the budget is going to be taken up first. So, town meeting will know then and there whether the contingent budget is in place or not. And if the contingent budget is in place, the separate questions of the police, fire or DPW are no longer necessary because they're been taken care of through that contingency budget.
What's the reason for it? Why don't you just have an override with five questions or all questions in one override like we always do? I don't understand why we need alternate budgets.
I just, well, first of all, I just gave you a very good reason to consolidate it into one. So, another reason is that we are a town as a whole, we are a community. We are not, the Board of Selectmen have the choice to bring up multiple questions at the ballot box for voters, or one simple question. So, we are a community as a whole. Do we pit DPW versus fire versus police versus this versus that versus everyone, or do we have stand up as one, one town, one community, one vote? That was what we thought of and that's what we did.
No one was questioning the one vote.
I'm going to go back to what we did when the school had their override, just a couple of years back, about three years ago. We passed a contingent budget. We did the same thing. We passed the budget and we passed something that said it was contingent on an override. When the override went through, it was authorized. If the override did not go through, they would have gone back to the initial budget. That's exactly what we're doing here, it's just it's five lines instead of one. It's the same thing in terms of that, that function.
I think the public needs to be perfectly clear on this and please correct me if I'm wrong. We go to town meeting and all three articles are passed. Goes the override vote, the override goes through, the money is there, everything's done.
Yes.
If all three are defeated, we still go to an override vote?
Yes.
And if everybody at town meeting, the rest of town says, that was defeated, there's no override, two people decide to vote for the override, then we just added a million dollars, whatever it is, to the budget, whether it be this year or next year, the levy, the limit is there to spend.
Okay, okay.
It's there to spend.
Give us a levy.
It may not have to be appropriate, the levy limit, but it's there for us.
I would want one of the assessors to speak to that because that gets into the legality of that.
They need this.
I don't agree to that.
They can hear you.
Yes, as I was before, I'm still levy based, but I'm also member of the Board of Assessors. Now, there's a lot of misunderstanding here and I'm going to try to make it simple. The override, it's permanent, it's forever, it's added to the levy. Monies that it may be earmarked for this year are not necessarily earmarked for that purpose next year. So, case in point, how much within seven hundred and what?
Four. Seven hundred and four?
Seven hundred and four thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, if that passes at the ballot box, you take last year's levy and you add an additional seven hundred and four thousand dollars to the levy, in addition to things like new growth and stuff like that, but that, I don't want to confuse you. But that means the town is allowed from this day forward to increase, not increase it every year, but it's attached to the levy and that levy goes forward till next year. Now, if the articles that are the three items that you're talking about on the warrant, let's say two of them pass and one doesn't and the two of them equal five hundred thousand dollars, you have an excess levy capacity of an extra two hundred and four thousand dollars. Now, what happens to that? The assessors go to the selectmen for the classification hearing to determine the tax rate. And whenever we do, we want to keep the excess levy capacity as tight as possible because if you don't use it, you lose it and it's left on the table. Okay? So, what towns typically will do, if there is an excess levy capacity of a large amount of money, they go to the town accountant and say, okay, this is way too much money, you have to put it in your estimated receipts and try to cover that so you don't lose the money. You can use it for something else, but if you pass a seven hundred and four thousand dollar override, it's only good for the expenditures you mentioned for the first year. After that, it can be spent for whatever in the budget they deem necessary. And if you only pass, if you pass none of the articles at town meeting, but the override, why, this would happen, I don't know, but the override, you know, hypothetically, still passed at the ballot box, that whole seven hundred and four thousand dollars becomes excess levy capacity, gets tacked onto the tax rate and does, it's there forever. So, and if anybody has any questions, I think Mike can back me up.
A levy that grows at two and a half percent each year, correct?
Yes.
That's, that's not two and a half percent. Let's say if the levy, if the levy was ten million dollars last year, nice round number, you can add an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that. So, now your new levy is ten million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then you would add on the seven hundred and four thousand dollars, that gets added in, and then the town generates new growth from construction and that gets added in. That's presumably offset by the taxes that you collect on the new properties, you know, new structures and so forth. But it's important for people to understand and I know this year it's for police and fire and so forth. That only has to be spent this year on those items. After this, all bets are off, but the seven hundred and four thousand dollars never goes there forever.
I, I want to just add to that, in terms of the one-year spending, Libby's perfectly correct there and obviously, we went through this with the schools and I know the present people here, the town administrator, town accountant, advisory committee and I believe the Board of Selectmen, you know, if, if the town is voting for it, we will keep it in their budgets. But as Steve Dodge mentioned earlier, budgets are amendable at any time on the town floor. The town meeting has the ultimate spending authority for anything here. They do not have to listen to us, they can spend it, they can make an amendment and spend it somewhere else, but they can do that now. They, they can sit there and say, you know, I don't like how much you're spending here, I want to take it and put it over here. That is always something that can be done now.
Steve, just for clarification, I think something's getting confused here and Libby, I'm going to maybe look to you because I think I disagree with something that you said, unless I heard it incorrectly. You disagree? My, my understanding is, if it doesn't pass at town meeting, it does not go to the ballot. It's, it's on the ballot, but, but it's got to, it's got to pass at town meeting to be able to go to the vote. Is there anybody that has that?
Where's the ballot?
I know it's on the ballot, but what if it fails at town meeting?
If, if all of it fails, if all of it fails, then the, the override is a moot point. Correct? But that's, but it's all three. But if one of them passes, it would be authorized by it.
The one.
The one would, would be authorized.
The seven hundred and four thousand dollars is the amount of the override, regardless of what they're spending on. So, that's going to be added to the levy.
Not, not unless we, we vote for spending, because you won't add it to the levy unless it's spent, correct, Mike?
If the DPW article doesn't pass a three hundred thousand, what's the ballot going to be? Just the police and the fire?
Seven hundred and eight ballots present.
Yeah. It's got a figure, it's got a defined figure in the ballot.
I just think this whole argument's sort of silly. This whole discussion, not the whole discussion, sorry, the last five minutes, it's sort of silly. If this doesn't pass town meeting, if three or four hundred people vote at town meeting, it vote this down, it's not going to pass the ballot.
It's not going to pass.
I don't even know why we're having this conversation.
Can I ask something here? The higher staff, Tom Bylaw says that you have to bring it up to the town meeting and get new staff approved. And while technically, the two police officers I'm looking for are new staff because we have that same staffing back in two thousand, this is the procedure that we have to do. So, whether or not it gets funded, in order for us to get that staff at some point, we have to have the town approve the staff level. And then you go funding, it's a two, five thing.
Yes.
So, those articles have to stand for at least the fire and the police above the staffing. That has to be. Okay? So, whether or not it gets funded, you still need to make it to do that.
Correct.
And, and again, on your thing with the police department and everything else, back in the Bill Clinton era, we got three police offices on a grant in federal government pays seventy-five percent. And that's what we used to increase our staffing to meet the needs of the community. We used to get community policing grants, we had debt grants, all the debt programs all paid for outside of the town's budget. All of that's gone and then we had three, we lost three offices and layoffs back.
Two thousand and three, yeah.
Two thousand and three.
And you haven't got them all back. I think you got a couple.
The town stuff pretty good job of stepping us up. We still haven't got to that level where we're caught up with today. We're still, you know, a decade behind in what our population, what our services, as far as what our funding is. But I just wanted to make that clear. While it shows some positive movement from the town, we lost a lot of funding that didn't come from the town. And now we're required to pay for about a hundred percent of our policing, the only grants that we see together for fifty percent of the bulletproof vest reimbursements. There's not a lot out there that's coming in to help pay for us. So, the town has stepped up and they're paying more and we're getting to that point. That's what the override's for. Say the word override because that's what it is. It's an increase in funding. Why? Because the, the budget as is, isn't meeting the needs of what the town's requiring.
Steve? I think, you know, I think what the chief said is really important for me and in this room, everybody just watching and more importantly, the people that you talk to to understand it. I've been saying this for probably ten years and it's, I guess, my annual climate stated again, this is my thirteenth town budget. This is the thirteenth time, with the exception of the one point three million dollar override that this town passed on behalf of the schools, that we are balancing the budget by cuts. I don't know of business out there that can go thirteen straight years and make a balanced budget on cuts alone without generating additional revenue. The reality is, our state aid increases at somewhere around a percentage to maybe one point two, one point three percent a year. Now, in some good years, our expenses are at about one and a half, two percent. In other years, whether it be the cost of petroleum, whether it be the cost of electricity, whether it just simply be the cost of retirement or benefits or health care, name something, goes up at a lot more than one, one and a half percent. So, you are basically in a situation where we have twelve to thirteen years of reductions that have been made over and over and over again to balance this budget and a deficit that is accumulates every single year. And we're all terrified to say the word override. But when trash doesn't get picked up, the phones ring like crazy. God forbid, there's an accident, these two are flying with men all over this town to make sure people are safe. You know, immediately, as soon as something goes wrong in the school or my phone rings and I'm fine with that, but there's a cost to doing this. And the reality is, where these guys have killed themselves to put together what in essence is a balanced budget, it is a balanced budget in a long way. Because the reality is, we probably need even more than the sixty, ten million dollars just to sustain ourselves. This is a one-year, maybe a two-year fix. We're talking about running the police back to staffing levels of fourteen years ago. If you pick up a newspaper, if you watch the news, you know full well, these guys are required to do a heck of a lot more today than they were fourteen years ago. And I just, before we start going back and forth and they're picking the deck, the way the war is looking, and it's fair to deal, it's a fair question, but the reality is, this additional budget that these guys are presenting are the override articles. So, I think they're making it very clear, this is what we would use the override for. So, I just, I want everyone to think about that when they walk around town over the next couple of weeks and they try to explain this. This town, these guys have been bound to this for years and everything they're doing. So, I just want you to think about that, that's all.
Steve, we had a lot of talk about the override, everybody's interested in it, some are for it, some are not sure, some are against it. I think it's very important for the public to hear, if this override passes, how much is it going to cost the average taxpayer? The exact number is a hundred and?
Thirty, thirty-five dollars a year?
About, about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year for a three hundred.
What's the assessed?
For a house.
Assessed three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar assessed house. I, I do want to point out that it's, the assessed value is usually less than if you put it out for sale. If somebody's saying, my house is worth five hundred thousand, they have to look at what the tax bill is to really see what the effect is. Because that five hundred, if I put my house on, out for sale for four hundred thousand, it may only be assessed right now for three twenty-five, especially if it hadn't been done in a few years, because only every three years.
Every year.
Yeah, that's why I, why I bring this up. Everything has got a cost to it. Now, this board is supporting the override and I'm not going to go into why, I think we all have heard from the fire police and the DPW. But I think it's important for the people that we're asking to vote for this to know how much it's going to cost you. To my way of thinking, if my house is an average house as was just said, and I have to pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year, I'm going to pay it. It's important. We need to support these three groups here that are doing so much for the town and that's the way I feel about it.
Steve, Steve, if I may, so as your, as your presentation, I just want to get back to your presentation for a moment. As you read off these, these facts and figures and the comparisons from twenty other towns.
Yeah, it was twenty-four towns total.
Twenty-four towns.
Twenty-three others, yeah.
In general, Pembroke is been in the median. The median of spending, the median in, in wages, the median in departmental spending.
Well, I didn't get into wages.
Okay.
Okay, just in spending.
Departmental spending, thank you. So, so we've been in, in the median in our comparable towns.
Yes.
So, in your opinion and the advisory committee's opinion, trying to be in the middle, yet we are in a budget crunch, where does that come from in, as you see it?
Well, it's, as we were talking, I flipped back to the chart here that shows the benefits and insurance. In the last ten years, it went from seven million eight to thirteen million five sixty-one. I mean, we've had a seventy-two percent increase in the benefits and insurance at a time that our revenues are going up at about three percent a year, or even less. So, it's, when you have something that is starting to chew up more and more of the budget, it is, it is squeezing everywhere else. And, and that's something we've been talking about. I know back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, I was, I first started talking about how this was going to become hard and it was around that time we started looking at the various things and that's going back, you know, it was right after that two thousand and three state aid cut that we really started looking at some of these things. It hasn't changed and we haven't found a solution. Whether the solution is to go to the, the state GIC or a GIC look-alike might be better, I don't know. I don't know if it would save us any money, what it would do, I haven't got those figures.
Well, I will say that GIC is, was a
Well, I will say that GIC is, was a very big pushback from, from the workers in town. And the Board of Selectmen sat down, well, it might have been seven years ago now.
It was a while, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we worked, we worked out with the unions, a negotiated way to, to save on healthcare without going into the GIC. So the town got a little bit back, and, and the employees got a piece of mind they're not going into the GIC.
The, the problem is, is that with the continued increase, with the increase, this year it was what?
Four point nine.
Four point nine, yeah, I was thinking five percent. Four point nine percent increase at a time that our revenue's going up by about three percent. It's still, it's still something that, you know, it's, it's, I believe the GIC this year didn't go up. So it's still something that, it, it has to be brought on the table if it will save us money. I, I don't know, because I haven't done any comparisons. I hear it's, it would, but I, I have no idea how much, if any. But it's, it's something that, I mean, it's gonna be a couple of years, you're early into the contracts right now. So it's gonna be a couple of years before you get into negotiations, but it's, it's gonna have to be raised. That, that benefits and insurance is something that's gonna, eventually it's gonna cause layoffs, because you, you just can't...
Another question, but I just wanted to know, continue on what Steve was saying. If you could go back to this third slide?
The revenue?
Yeah. And you can see what state aid has done, or has it done?
Well, the lottery aid is still three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars less than what it was ten years ago.
Right, so the state's still taking our income tax money, the state's still taking our sales tax money. The fact remains, though, in the last ten years, the state has chosen to increase spending in other places than municipal aid. I just don't want people to leave the room tonight thinking that something's wrong in, in Pembroke, because it really isn't. There's external forces pushing us, principally the state aid. If that number on the far right were fifty point one seven percent instead of five point one seven percent, just like the Pembroke residents have been contributing, I don't think we'd be having this conversation right now.
No, we'd have, you know, we'd, we'd have the firefighters and the police officers and a balanced budget.
I went upstairs and read the ballot question, just wanted to be clear. It does tie to this three specific requests. So it says, shall the town increase the, by override, the levy limit for police, fire, DPW, with the dollar amount, starting with the fiscal year, so on and so on. So I would assume then, if it does not pass town meeting, it can't be spent, the override would be null and void, I would think.
But how you, you've got three articles.
Well, that's a whole different story. Let me finish.
Five items, five items.
Let me finish things. But it still goes to the fact of, and I've spoken for the need for police and fire, I've spoken for the years, there's definitely a need. DPW, we looked at their numbers, that they're underfunded compared to other towns, does not mean that that money will be there the following year for police, fire, and roads. We have an inherent problem still financially. It's the elephant in the room. Across the country, the pensions of municipal employees across the country, in this week's, Saturday's Barron magazine, one point seven trillion dollars underfunded. One point seven trillion. We have fifty-some-odd million, and we're, they're making certain assumptions on rate of return. If that rate of return dropped a certain percent, it's gonna get worse, so...
The rate of return that they're estimating, I think that like eight of the last ten years, they did not meet. I believe that every time they, they go back and revise how much behind we are in the pensions, it goes up because they're not making their rate of return. Yes?
I have a question, just, I, I don't know what it is, but I always wanted to ask this. I left ten years ago, and there was a question about health insurance. Why couldn't the town, and it's been done in other companies, say, okay, from now on, new employees are gonna pay this money, and go out that way? Because that, that would be something I don't think that the employees that are here now, we would fight against. But was that ever...
That, that is, that is something that, in various times, the advisory committee has asked the Board of Selectmen to think of that in their next negotiations, in terms of whether it was or what happened with it within the negotiations, is something...
You know, ten years, we've got a lot of employees working and new ones coming.
Right, but it's, of course, it's, almost all of the employees in town are covered under a union, so it would have to be in the union contract, that would have to be a negotiated item as to what happened there, you know, I'm...
And I think we have negotiated that over the last three years, in the last three year contracts, we've brought everybody from the town up to twenty-five percent.
Up to the twenty-five.
Up to the twenty-five percent, where a lot of them were way down below that.
Yeah, some were like eighteen, I think.
So we understand that, and we have tried to negotiate that, and got everybody up to, to the twenty-fives now, anyway, so. And that's something we have to negotiate.
Ten years ago, the people were only paying ten percent.
And a lot of them, a lot of the unions, yeah. It, it's a process, you know, and it's, it is something that we, we do discuss in a lot of the joint meetings. We constantly bring it up, and as they said, over a period of time, they brought up the, the thing as to whether they can go in, because it's, it's obvious a little, little easier to get something that doesn't hurt anyone that's currently working.
Right.
It's the new employees, it's a little easier to get a union maybe to agree to that, but that's, but that's...
They know when they get the job, they're gonna go.
Yeah, right. But I, again, you know, the unions that they are, that represent the people, and the, the, that are within the union, the selectmen are trying to represent the town, and it is a negotiation. You know, it's, it is one of the areas that, I think that if, if you really look at the, the most arguments we have is in the union contracts. It's, it's one of the areas that we've been most critical on over the years. And if you go back several years, there were several of the contracts that we, we asked to vote no on, and it, and it still went through. But, you know, we've, we've had that conflict, you know, from our point of view, we're thinking that you've, you've gotta be more stringent on it, and harder on it, and negotiate harder, and better for the town. Obviously, we don't see everything that goes on in there, but that has been singularly the biggest argument that, that our board has had with the Board of Selectmen.
If I could just add, then, I'm not going to speak to the negotiations that are happening behind closed doors, but I'll leave you with this. Every negotiation that I've been on as a member of the Board of Selectmen, both sides have been mad at me. The advisory side have been mad for what I've given away, and the union side's mad for what I took away, or didn't give them, so...
And the other thing is, we've taken a couple of them to state arbitration, and arbitration has found in favor of the union, not in favor of the town. So that's, that's something that we can't fight back, so...
Yes, Libby?
Just one other petition to that, as a form of a suggestion, and again, this would be for new employees, who'd be negotiating their contracts. Pembroke has an anachronism, nobody does it anymore, but employees that retire can walk out the door with huge compensation checks for unused sick time and comp time, and they walk out the door sometimes thirty, forty thousand dollars, over and above. Nobody does that anymore. Marshfield did away with that twenty-five years ago. And new employees, you don't, you don't penalize the existing employees, otherwise you'd get clung. But new employees aren't gonna expect that, because nobody does it anymore. And believe me, there have been abuses. Not, I don't mean in Pembroke necessarily, but...
It's, there's, there's, there's been things that have been in the paper about people retiring and, and getting more, more money in, in their final check than they earned the last year and a half. That's, we've seen that in the paper.
My predecessor in my job walked out the door with a check of forty-six thousand dollars.
That was not in Pembroke.
No. Any other questions? Well, we...
I do have one more question.
Okay.
Just people, I don't know what I'm asking. I know you said that if the override goes, do its spending how much, or three hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Hundred and twenty-five.
But we're also gonna be paying more because of the year we spend on the levy.
It, it can increase, it adds to the levy, so it will add to what can be increased two and a half percent a year forever, yes.
So, so we've got a lot more than a hundred and forty-five?
Over time, yes, it will increase over time.
No, I mean, next year, we're gonna have, yeah, plus, plus the two and a half?
Right, it'd be another fifteen thousand, so that two and a half percent would add another, it'd be about four...
Four and a half percent, seventeen and a half percent, simple math.
But I, she's, she's talking that, once it's in there, that four percent, then the next year, that hundred and twenty-five is gonna be another two and a half percent, which is another three dollars a house.
Another three dollars on top of that.
Yes.
I think people need to understand that if they pass a seven hundred and four thousand dollar override, it gets added to what the levy is this year. And that stays with the levy.
Right.
But don't misunderstand, that doesn't mean next year you add another seven hundred and four thousand.
No, it's two and a half percent.
It's two and a half on top of that.
So, that hundred and twenty-five dollar for that house will add another, say, three fifty the next year, two and a half percent of the hundred and twenty-five. That's what you were getting at? That, that, that house will continue to grow up.
People wanna know, how much did I have to pay in taxes?
Yeah. It, it becomes personal, you know, what's, what is it to me? And, and in that case, they get the hundred and twenty-five added, and then the next year, it's gonna be, it'll be a part of the overall increase, but it'll be averaging, say, about three fifty a year for, and, you know, in a hundred years, obviously it grows, but, I mean, it's, it does add to the two and a half percent that you can increase. Yes, Steve?
Just a, looking down the line, we increase, we do a proper two and a half override, we increase. It just went through, and the professor last week said we're gonna have well over a million dollar deficit here. So if that happens, are we hiring people to live among?
Well, again, if you, if you look at some of the things that he included in there, I'm just gonna go through some of this stuff as I, you know, for instance, he added two hundred and forty thousand for capital outlays that we didn't have this year. Then he increased, he increased how much we were putting into the stabilization by fifty thousand, the OPEB a hundred thousand, that workers' comp fund that we started, twenty-five thousand. So, you know, there's, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that he added into that figure that are completely discretionary. So, you know, it's, it's... Will it eventually, in two or three years? Again, you go back to what's happening in state aid, what's happening in some of the things. If our, if our income is going up about three percent a year, and our benefits are going up by seven, and we continue to have other things going up by, you know, four, five percent, eventually, you know, in a couple of years, you run right back into that situation, and you may have a layoff in two, three, four years, because the other things are pushing the expenses up, but the revenues aren't there. We've gone to the well on the revenues in terms of some of this stuff. You know, we, we added about, oh, it's, we added the stuff for the tax, that, in lieu of tax, solar, a hundred and five thousand, the rental solar, seventy-six thousand were added in. And a few years ago, we added the meals tax, was a three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Also, within all of the solar thing, is a reduction in some of the expenses we had. You know, through smoke and mirrors, we've, we've gotten all of this. I have no idea where we're gonna come up with something like that, which will give us a, you know, a two hundred thousand, you know, well, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar boost in revenue, and a, what was our projected savings on the solar this year?
It'll be two hundred and fifty eventually.
It'll be two hundred and fifty thousand eventually.
But sixty-seven percent go to the schools.
Yeah, but, well, I mean, and some of it goes to the water department as well, correct?
Right.
And, you know, 'cause it's, which is an enterprise fund, so, you know, if something else comes up, if we can add another solar field or something, I don't know, but, you know, I don't know where we're gonna come up with stuff like that, and that's what's kept us from collapsing right now, coming up with the meals tax and the solar fields. You know, I don't, you know, I just don't know where, where the next one like that will come, because it will, and, and it could, you know, again, it comes in state aid. I think that there's a ballot question that's coming up to lower the sales tax down to five percent. You know, if the state loses that kind of money, I'm sure that it's gonna, gonna come from us somewhere in the state aid to the cities and towns. And again, you know, it's, when you look at the state aid figures, and, I got that, no, that was earlier on, you know, it's, I, I like to say that the state aid is, it's, it's an aid to cities, and if there's any leftover, it goes to towns. Brockton is getting two thousand dollars per capita in state aid. Pembroke's getting eight hundred and thirty-four. You know, it's, it is what it is. Brockton has, what, fourteen reps, twelve state reps, and we share a state rep with Hanson and Duxbury. You know, so, you know, we're not hurt, and it's, and it's a simple matter of numbers there. You know, Quincy, Lowell, you know, all of these cities basically make sure that the state aid figures favor them. And that's where all the state reps are, and we get the leftovers. Sure, Don?
Yeah, Don Bryant up on Mountain Ave. A question for you, the savings that a town should have, is there some kind of guide for, we're, we're in trouble because we have only this amount, or we need that amount?
I think that the, the suggested rate is three percent of your budget should, should be free cash every year, and I think that we've topped out at about two, two and a half, in that range, I forget what it is. But we're, we're well below that, and again, as I mentioned before, I'm not gonna say what it's gonna come in, but we used seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of local receipts, we increased our estimates there. So that's gonna significantly cut into what's available in free cash. So we're well below the recommended figures.
One other thing I wanna say, this, this last year, a couple of years have been quite involved politically, and we hired some students, and I've done a lot of house-to-house kind of stuff, you know, if you do in politics. And I can't tell you the number of senior citizens I've come across, in tears, at their doorstep, about our property taxes. Now, I'm not sure, I mean, the amount of work being put into this is immense, and the needs are phenomenal, I understand that. And I'm not sure actually how to take that into account. Our seniors, some of our seniors scared. And I've also been involved in fuel assistance work, from the raising funds, and had the experience of those conversations, you know, at the table, raising money, where seniors shuffle over to the table and, and tell us their stories. Now, there's other ways to help, I know, that I'm not aware of. So, you know, you guys are much more aware of that than I am. But I, I just wanna put a note here, that I'm sure is part of the selectmen's planning, is the fear of some of our seniors that we're gonna go the old way, which is, they're gonna get pushed. And, you know, as we as we move the taxes up, I'm sure it's already been taken account of. But to me, being pretty new, that's a pretty stunning experience that I've had over the last couple of years.
Could I add something to what this gentleman said?
Sure.
Just be aware that Pembroke has been very proactive in putting in place programs to help senior citizens over the age of sixty-five. I mean, to the point where they can defer their taxes. And they have to meet certain income and asset limitations, but there are senior exemptions, there are deferrals. And we recommend, you know, that they come down to the assessor's office, talk to the assessor. She can explain the process to apply for this. I've always said there's no excuse for a senior citizen to choose between paying their real estate taxes and buying their medication or their food, because the town has the ability to set that aside until either they sell a property or they pass away.
Yeah, I I went to one of those workshops, just just to see what was being offered. And the amount of poverty you have to be in to get help is.
It's pretty extraordinary.
By that time, I'm surprised you can even live in the amount you that would qualify you to be a. But that's a conversation that doesn't belong here, I know. But thank you for for making that.
It's it's, you know, I I know Peg Struzek isn't here to to speak on on that regard. I I'm involved with the Society of St. Vincent de Paul out of Our Lady of the Lake in Halifax, and we have a food bank. And there's there's quite a few seniors to come through there that that are in need of help. And I'm sure that that if Peg was here, she'd she'd indicate that as well. But there are, there is, there's a lot of help out there for them. Unfortunately, some of them, they they have a lot of pride, and they don't wanna, they don't want to accept that help. Yeah, it's a.
And I I appreciate all the town's doing, it's not a criticism, it's just an awareness that when we say it's only a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's that's serious money for some people.
Yeah, it's ten dollars a month to somebody.
That's right. And, you know, I'm not sure that balances, you know, as I know, or whatever, or whatever else the town should be. But, you know, just human compassion says that we recognize that what we maybe casually do is not so casual to other people.
Steve, I've got a suggestion, that the council on aging is always looking for volunteers. Drivers, meals-on-wheels drivers. Town of Pembroke supports a tax work-off program. Five hundred dollars a year off your taxes, if you can qualify. So they are looking for help, people are looking for help on their own to pay their taxes. I think it's a great deal.
And I believe the income restrictions are a lot less stringent on that that particular program than some of the other programs.
Yes.
If I, I don't remember the specifics, but I remember it is a lot better.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Okay. We'll move on to the next item then, thank you for participating in this. The next thing up on the agenda will be the town government study committee. The town manager article will be presented before the board. Talk about the present article details on the town manager article number twenty-one, and to answer any questions that the board may have.
So Tim Brennan is here, just got caught up in the flow of people who hear him.
So are we all set?
Yeah, I think we're just waiting to have, just want to bring a slide up, so. I know, lots of people stuck around for this one. Thought I'd just been skewered by the assessors and the planning board, I figure, kind of, talking about no cost would be interesting.
You still with us, Matt?
I guess.
The phone is still on.
Maybe I'm you.
Well, game's on too.
Hey, I'm here, I'm sorry, I you catch that.
That's all right, we're just, we're through with with the presentation of the, town meeting, and we're now gonna be working on the town government study committee, article number twenty-one. And we're gonna have a presentation here and.
Yeah, sure, so thanks for for making some time for us again. I'm not gonna give a presentation, like, so this is the, this is a slide from a presentation I gave earlier this month. But I I kinda just want to take time, I think, especially after we just sat through a lot of discussion about things that are gonna cost Pembroke money in the future. I think what the town government study committee is kind of bringing to the table with our proposition for our town manager article is a rare opportunity for a zero-cost investment in the community's future. So I think our main goal has been to propose a way that we can logically align professional staff within the town and separate out policymaking boards. So I'm displaying here on the on the chart what our current organizational structure looks like. And then underneath, we kind of have a proposed structure that we've come up with. I'll say this committee has had its iterations for the past, you know, over a decade. So I'm I'm excited that there's some momentum and engagement around this, and I'm hoping that the townspeople will kind of support what I'd consider a kind of logical streamlining of of staff within town. And I, you know, I'm happy to to answer any questions the board or anybody else in the room has about about the about what we're proposing.
Could I just begin with one thing? Tim, of course, I'm in the committee, but I'll ask you as speaker. All the elected boards of communities that are in town right now, do they all remain?
Yeah, yeah, I will make that clear, so we're not proposing eliminating any elected or appointed boards in this act. It's simply kind of reorganizing where professional staff lie. So there'd be no changes as far as what what exists, what does not exist.
That's important because as as we were studying this for the last, oh, I've been on the committee for for three years, but in the last year and a half, we've really geared up with this goal in mind. And one of the things that we've heard from town townspeople, not only heard from townspeople that all the boards of committee, elected boards of committee should should remain, but they serve a function that's both statutory, there's state laws governing each one, that's the reason they were established in the first place. And they also serve a function that a single manager cannot do. So for the D P W, water commissioners, the board of assessors, the planning board, those those folks, and also the board of health, those folks need to stay in place, and they need to function as a board that performs policy duties, that researches how how their department is working, how to help their how to help their department director, if they have one. But the director themselves should should report to a C E O, a central management figure. And then that's that's the thought process that the committee has been been looking at. And I just wanted you to expand on that a little bit, if you could.
Yeah, sure, and I think there's been some confusion related, okay, so Ben's here. So I think there's been some confusion related specifically to the the D P W. And admittedly, I think the language in the in the article is a bit confusing around D P W, and maybe can, maybe Ed or Dan could explain it a little bit better. My understanding is that there's language in the article that rescinds the D P W as is. And I think that's due to kind of state law that's established and how that department was 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 brought into the town. But we've also included language that recreates the commissioners, because our intent is never to, particularly with kind of like setting the water rates and water revenue, I know I know those things have kind of come up as as points of discussion. Our intent is, that still remains with the D P W commissioners, they'll be setting the water rates, they'll be responsible for the enterprise fund. The only the only thing that really changes is where the the director lies within the organizational structure. And that would change from under the D P W commissioners, it would move under the the post-town manager. So I don't know if.
I have a question.
Sure.
Why is that so important? If you're if you're only looking to move the director from the D P W to under the town manager, I don't see any reason or any problems that have occurred in the past, or any reason to even do that. And in doing that, we have to abolish the whole act of the D P W and then recreate the D P W. And there isn't any specific language in the article that says that the commissioners will remain in charge of the water department or the enterprise fund or the water-setting rates. But it does specifically say that you're abolishing the D P W and you're taking the director and putting him under the town manager, should the article pass. So I I don't see the need for all of that. I don't I don't even see the need to touch the D P W at that point. If you're gonna leave it alone, then why are you moving the director? He's been functioning like this for years, and and he works very well in the environment, there's been no problems, no issues, there's no need to touch it.
So that, so two pieces to that question. One, again, I think our our main goal is to align professional staff under professional management within the town. So even if even if nothing has gone wrong in the past, I'm trying to, I think we're trying to be kind of proactive in looking forward in what logically makes sense. So I think logically it would make sense to have, again, professional staff within the town reporting to professional management rather than volunteer or appointed board members. And then as far as the the language in the act around who controls the enterprise fund, I think that's something we are looking into, 'cause if if there's not a state statute that specifically says that D P W is also or always responsible for that, we do want to make clear and are willing to amend that so that that language is in there. 'Cause that's how we want it to be.
The state legislative article that created the D P W put the water in and went through a specific group of things that belonged under the D P W. And if you're gonna abolish the act and you want to leave the directors in charge of the water, you've got to amend the article to come up with language to say that. Because the article specifically says it abolishes the act that created the D P W. And at that point, there is no D P W legislatively, it's only whatever the town makes it. So if you're going to make it something, then you've got to amend the language to make it something, because the language is not there.
Yeah.
And once you abolish the D P W, your town manager is in charge of it all.
But please, please, with the, there's a connotation to that, abolish the D P W. We're not abolishing the D P W, we're abolishing the act that formed the D P W in nineteen ninety-one, because that because that act was, as you know, had a large umbrella, that that we need to abolish the act and reestablish the D P W. And that's what that's what this article does.
But you don't go far enough in there, because you don't reestablish the water department.
I I agree, we need to amend that, so it's clear as there.
The language has to be clear in there.
Well, I think we reached out to town council, so, you know, that's our intent, we want to leave that in there. So whether whether it's implied by just having a D P W or there's some legalese that has to change to to make that apparent, that's what we're trying to do.
I would tell you that the legalese needs to be in there, and the implication needs to be very clearly defined, because we have a tendency around here to imply things, and then things change down the road. So if you're gonna leave the water department alone, and you're gonna leave your water commissioners in charge of the enterprise fund and the water rates, the language needs to be in there, because you clearly create a D P W of some sort after you abolish it. So you clearly need to finish the language.
And if I could just go on, why this committee wants, why the D P W, why we want the D P W to continue continue on in in their function? I just spoke about the managers, the director speaking to a manager, but I'll speak about the the function of the D P W and the water commissioners. The water commissioners need to meet, need to be able to meet separately, it's something a town manager can't do on his own, he would have to sub it out. So we need we need volunteers, we need elected people to come in to set the water rates. And not only set the water rates, the water rates are set for what? Water rates are set to what what costs are, what the cleaning of of the water is, the new roadway work that you need, the new pipes, the new wells, all the research, the engineering. So we we need, so just so there's no, even though the language is fuzzy, and I agree with you, that's the way it's written, we need to amend it. But the committee is, understands that the D P W needs to act as the water commissioners now and going forward.
Water is going to be one of the biggest resource battles in the future. And we already have a plan at our D P W to protect this town's resources and to develop further resources. That thing gets sidetracked at this point in time, future, we could be in trouble for water resources. There's a battle going on out there for water that that is, it's unbelievable when you get involved. Only because I'm involved in it, I can say that. But when I realize the magnitude of what's going on for water grabs, and you know that the issues we have with with Brockton and other towns pumping and and the and the resources we we as a community in the past gave up, we've got a lot of area we need to cover and protect. And and the language needs to be clear in there so that that can continue and the town can be protected.
So we agree. Right, we agree, and it's just an issue of, you know, we can't write it, so we're deferring to town council to make sure it gets done correctly.
Will will they be able to get it in the warrants printed?
Yeah, the warrant's printed, but as you as you know, when when we go to town meeting, there's usually a tweet or two, and and some articles are within spirit, but written according to the way the law wants it to, so it's not an amendment. You're reading it rather than saying as printed, you're reading your motion, the one town town council gives you. So one thing we do want to check, though, Ben, even though even though the establishment of the D P W as written was slim at best, we want to make sure that he he looked at that and.
He meaning town council.
He meaning town council, because there may be state law that overrides, that already establishes that the the D P W and and the water commission acted on.
Whatever it may be, it's just, it's got to be clear that that the water department is established and protected and and so forth the way we're discussing it here.
We agree.
So we have your support. Well, I mean, I didn't have, again, I'm I'm here to kind of answer questions. I I think it's a, I think it's a rare opportunity, and again, since given a lot of what we're talking about, and all of the budgetary meetings and every town meeting is something that costs the town money, this ultimately doesn't cost anything. And I think, especially over the long term, it kind of streamlining operations like this results in some big benefits.
Tim?
Yeah.
Can I just go back to the D P W again? What we're talking about is section seven, Department of Public Works, is three paragraphs, A, B, and C. Now, we're going to amend with council approval that that section.
We're if needed, we just want council to ensure that the D P W as reestablished by this act is still gonna remain in control of setting the water rates and the enterprise fund. So they might say that, hey, state law says that anything called the D P W always has to be in control of the enterprise fund, then we don't have to change anything. But we're just, we're just waiting for them to come back and tell us.
Yeah, well, I don't see anything in here about water department.
Right, which is which is our question to town council, because they might have looked at it and say, hey, it's it's implied that the D P W is always controlling that, so that's why we didn't address it. But we just, I think we reached out today just to make sure, because we want to make it clear.
Or or town council may not have known that that was the intent, was to leave the enterprise fund.
That's why.
And I don't know the, you know, and I don't know what Joel Bard had in mind, because I didn't, he didn't get it, he didn't call back, you know, and I called him right after I talked to him.
to Dan and he was out the whole day and I waited until, you know, until tonight's meeting.
Yeah, let's have a conversation with him and make sure that the language, the language is clear to the intent.
Yeah, I'm gonna explain to him exactly what the conversation that we're having here tonight is and does that Section 7 reflect what we want to do? If not, what can we do to change it so that it would, it would reflect the conversation that we're having?
Right, and when we say the water budget, the water commissioners set the rates and have charge of the enterprise fund, it's important for them to be able to manipulate the funds such that they could facilitate the cleaning, the maintenance in the future.
Well, I mean, if they're water commissioners, they're in charge of the enterprise fund and they got total control over that fund.
And the importance there is only for what Dan is driving at, the global aspect of running the water division, not only the cleaning and the wells, but the upkeep and the future resources and the wells that we're planning and the water towers and everything associated with it. We're replacing, when we're doing these road projects, we're replacing old water mains and we're replacing old house connections and we're putting them on the larger mains so that they've got better pressure, they've got cleaner water, so when we flush our systems, they're not getting brown water, but we're getting it flushed out and we're getting the tests that we need. And it's all of that sort of thing. It's not, it's not that we want to control the money and do it. It's a function of being able to put the needs where they come as we go and still have a little money in case we have a water main break or in case we have a fire or in case a hydrant goes or something else happens. It's all there, it's self-sufficient. We don't have to come to the taxpayers and therefore we try to keep the rates down because we're able, we're at a point where we're really self-sufficient and efficient with it.
I think Tim and Dan have made it very clear that their intentions are...
Working in the right direction.
That they are, that's right. And, you know, your question of the DPW director, I mean, if you're gonna have a department head meeting in town hall, you need to have seven or eight or nine departments, whatever there are, and you have to include in that the DPW director. So, that's...
That's, you know...
That doesn't seem...
That's an incidental issue in terms of the water department.
Right, and I can see keeping the water department, first of all, I don't know who would want the position of resetting the water rates because they never go down.
No, but they're pretty stable right now.
Right now.
And we've got some debt service coming off and things are, things are working in a positive fashion that nothing has to change.
Are we working on a strategy for Abington, Rockland, for example?
We are, we are.
For them pulling, you know, they're pulling great sandy down to...
We're, we're all over that issue. We're all over the Brockton issue with pulling down Silver Lake because that affects, that affects Sandy as well, even though it's not a direct effect. It affects, it affects the water levels and then they draw down and we have to shut wells down when they get to a certain point. What we're working on now is having them be restricted when they get to a certain point so we don't have to shut our wells down.
Right, and I can see the need for having DPW commissioners in place because there are gonna be times where we're gonna look for land, for example, to protect our wells.
Exactly.
And when we do that, we're gonna be able to do it through the enterprise fund in most cases and not have to, you know, go through a big, you know, dog and pony show.
Right, and that's what we did, we did at the old Chiptech site up there in the back, Swanburg property.
Right.
When we bought that, we're in the process of putting new wells in up there so that we can service the north side of town and get that water tank up on the north side to be full all the time. So, when this industry comes in, we're not gonna have a problem up there with water pressure because we'll have wells that can handle that and we're not pumping it from the other side of town.
You know that the Abington, Rockland also has a bill into DEP and I'm not sure about legislation, but also into DEP about drawing water, putting another pipe into Furnace Pond and drawing water, cleaning it up and sending it and selling it to Brockton.
We're in the process of, what do you call it? Fighting that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 no. You know, it's one thing to draw on it, it's another thing to sell it somewhere else.
Can I just make a few more points and then I'll yield the floor back to the discussion? There are a couple of final points I just want to make on this. One, there's, there's a bit of a perception, I think, of kind of, you know, I think we're fortunate in the town that we've had some boards that are very experienced and have been operating functionally well in a, even though it's kind of siloed off. Again, I try to think of this as kind of a more long-term thinking and being proactive because at some point, you know, we're not, we might not have these experienced boards. So, I think that's another reason why I just really want to focus on kind of aligning professional staff. Another point of note is just as we kind of talk about investing more in the community, when you go out and seeking funds and asking people to pay more taxes to invest in this, invest in the community, I think if you give them a picture of this current structure of how the town government is aligned, they might look at that and say, well, you know, you're kind of asking me to throw money into a mixer here. What's going on? But I think if, I think the community is gonna be a lot more comfortable, willing to spend and willing to have their tax rates increase and willing to invest in the community if they look at kind of what we're proposing as a clean kind of operating structure in the town and they know that there are kind of clear lines of communication, there's stuff not being lost in translation.
So, there's... I just have one thing, I said, I apologize, but not, because I haven't been here for the last, you know, month or so because I was out injured, but it didn't really get a chance to really look over and really go through everything about this, but I do believe in a town manager system. But the one thing that I don't understand is that if we're gonna go that professional into a town manager and all that, then why are we having all these other boards? I can see having an assessor, a chief assessor or whatever that reports to the town manager and runs that, but I don't understand why we're keeping all the boards and commissions and all that. Can you just explain what that part of it is? I mean, why are we keeping everybody else if we're trying to go more professional with the town manager running with heads of departments?
Sure. I mean, I think different people have different thoughts, but I can give you my personal thoughts. One, I think it's still important to kind of have the community involved, so if you have some policymaking bodies with other parts of either appointed or elected to the community, I think that's generally a good thing. And two, it's, if, you know, I think it's a separate discussion on whether or not the roles within kind of policy or policymaking boards are actually needed. I think it's a fair discussion to have, but I do think kind of blowing all that up and doing this realignment at the same time might be a little too much to swallow. So, we're trying to just make kind of baby steps forward. And then if there's a future discussion to be had, whether or not a particular board or body makes sense, I think that's, I think that's fair game. I think it's a worthwhile discussion to have. I don't know if you have any thoughts on it.
Oh, sure. And so, the boards, the boards that are in place now, the elected boards, serve a function statutory. The board assessors are necessary. Whether they're elected or appointed, you still have to have a board of assessors, you still have to have a planning board. So, the boards have to be there and as Tim said, you know, we need to take one step at a time. This is a big step for the town and it's an important step that I think we should take. And to, to change too much at once, we might, we run the risk of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. So, we don't want to do that.
I think too, and we brought it up in the past, that, you know, we've been fortunate to have Ed for a long time, but at some point Ed's not gonna be here and we really want to put ourselves in a position to attract a top-quality candidate for town manager. And kind of this, the current structure isn't as good of a recruiting tool as what we're proposing as a structure. I think somebody coming into a much more aligned organization that...
But you know, you might as well call him a town manager because that's what he does now anyway. Most all of the things that I read in here, Ed does.
Sure.
He's, you know, he already has all these department head meetings with all of the heads of the boards and he already runs a lot of the things and he gets, he gets a lot of his input when he comes back to the five board of selectmen and says, you know, this is what I really think should be done or shouldn't be done and we either agree with him or disagree with him. And the only thing I can see is that most of the stuff that's under the board of selectmen is, is pretty much gone as far as, you know, any power or structure at all ends up under the town manager.
Yeah, well, again, just, you know, professional management, we're trying to push under the town manager. So, appointing powers, but policy decisions remain within the board and the voters. You know, I think it's, and also it's a good opportunity if, you know, if, like I said, we've been lucky to have Ed, if he's here to kind of usher in or help us through this transition, it's even kind of better timing for us.
So, when you, when you met with these committees for the last few years or whatever and you looked at all of these other towns around, do they all do this the same way?
No, certainly not. Not, definitely towns don't do it the same way. We're seeing more and more towns move towards some type of town manager structure, but I certainly wouldn't say that all towns are doing this or even necessarily the same way. We're trying, you know, I think we, we're taking the best of what we've seen and trying to improve upon it and make it, because we believe it can work within our town. I mean, every town's kind of unique too, so I can't really speak to the histories of different towns that are doing this, but I can say that a lot of towns are moving towards this town manager structure.
Right, but I can see that when you look at, when you look at the last time the town manager came up for a town vote, it got voted down because people didn't want that because they were gonna lose all of these boards, commissions, you know, and all of that and it was gonna be more under the town manager control. So, if you really believe in a town manager control, I just, I don't understand why you need all of these other boards and commissions. That's, that just, that just doesn't make sense to me because if you, if you look at other towns, it's really not, it's really not that way.
I think like Dan...
From what I see of it anyway.
I think like Dan said, some of it's just required by law, so you can't, you just can't do much about that, but I don't know. I mean, as far as the other boards and commissions go, I think it's fair to discuss in the future whether or not we need them or not.
Right, and so, every town, every town has board of assessors, planning board, DPW, board of health, you have to, you have to by law. So, whether you have a town manager or not, every town does it. Whether they're elected or not, it's up to each individual town, but that's inconsequential. The fact is, every town has, has these boards and these boards are there by law. Planning board, subdivision control, assessors, of course, your tax money, and they have to be there. So, the manager, the manager relationship with those boards is really the relationship of the manager to the director. Kathy, the assessor, the board of assessors. Gene, the DPW director in the case of the DPW. That's so, you know, the board of health, which was realigned last year. So, we need the manager to manage the directors and the directors will serve the policy that's set by the boards and the boards will also serve the statutory functions that they do now. That's the big thing. This is not the, the town manager's not directing the boards. So, I guess that might be a misconception, maybe you don't have, though, but some people might out there. The town manager is not directing the planning board, is not directing the board of assessors. He is, he is the direct, the director of the directors, the manager of the directors.
Any other questions for, or Dan?
Good job.
Great. Did you have a question, Adam? I didn't hear it.
No, I said, "Great job."
Oh, okay. Setting town meeting.
Thank you for coming in. Just have a couple of other things on the agenda and do we, we don't have any old business to discuss? We discussed a lot of town administrators report. Do you have anything else?
Just a couple of things. Number one, you have a summary of the Route 53 car project and if you have any questions. Sabrina, did they get the full copy?
They put it in email.
Okay.
I'll bridge it out.
All right, so, yeah, sixty pages long, so I wanted to kind of condense that. So, if you have any questions, feel free to get ahold of me. Hazardous Waste Day Saturday, we had about 144 cars were there during the course of the, during the day, so again, a very successful event. If you haven't seen it yet, you need to read the Suffolk University citizen survey that was sent out, that was responded to by some 400 residents. It's really interesting reading and it gives you a sense of what people think are important in the community. So, it's, it's, it's worth spending a bit of time and going through that survey.
And then Suffolk University...
Yes, Suffolk, that's the one we did as a result of a strategic planning retreat.
And where would we find that?
Pardon?
Where would we find that?
It was in last week's packet.
Oh, yeah, see, I didn't get that. I didn't get last week's packet, so.
So, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else to say, Lou? Any new business? And any upcoming events, Lou? A couple of things that you...
Yeah, I just wanted to remind, the board wants to remind the public that on May 8th, the annual town meeting, be held at the high school, and we hope to start promptly at 7:00 p.m. Also, on Saturday, May 12th, is the annual town election. Several very important races need to be voted on and we hope you'll all come out and vote. Thank you.
Is there a need for executive session?
No, sir.
No need for executive session.
No, to adjourn, if you're done.
Our next regular scheduled meeting will be on May 14th, which actually, we'll probably have a meeting, I would assume, May 8th before the annual town meeting.
Special. I think a special meeting is what...
Right, so it'll probably be around 6:30 because town meeting's gonna start at 7:00.
So, probably meet 6:30 at the school and then the next regular scheduled one here would be at May 14th.
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn, may I just say that, welcome back.
Oh, thank you.
We're glad to have you back and hope you'll be here to stay.
They did a lot of bionic work to me, so I should be in good shape in a few more months and ready to go. And the only other thing that I can say is, and I mentioned it earlier, is that Division Marine Fisheries seems to think that we're gonna supersede and bypass what our highest goal was last year. We're already well over 200,000 fish that have already come up and they're just coming up like gangbusters this year and all the guys are working really hard, day by day, in the morning and at night, taking, taking readings and making sure that the things are clear and everything is working properly. We have had a little bit of problems with the water. I can only apologize to some of the residents on Furnace Pond, but we've had so much water this year that it's really hard to control. And the fact being is that Brockton has not taken any water at all this year since the first part of the year because they were pretty much told not to take any water until they fixed the screening, which they've authorized $58,000 to fix the screening so no more fish end up in Silver Lake. So, we're waiting for them to fix that. Division Marine Fisheries has been on their tail to get that done. And as soon as we get that all done, then we shouldn't have a problem with losing a lot of these fish to Silver Lake. So, it's, everything is coming along really good at that end of it, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take, before we adjourn, a moment to thank Mr. Stone for his service on the board of selectmen. This will be the last televised meeting that we will have, you know, with Lou. So, it's been an enjoyable nine years.
Great.
And I enjoyed his friendship very much.
Enjoyed his friendship very much.
He's been a very classy gentleman all-
I don't think we can find anybody with work this hard as Lou. I'm, I'm really putting a lot of stuff together for a sort of, I know it's been an enjoyable time working with you.
Thank you. Nine years went by, I look back, they went by very quickly.
I'd gift you as going to be a no-truck sign.
Yeah, we still have a couple of projects in the works.
Yes, we do.
And Ed has promised to send me a pulse gun.
Yeah, it has been a pleasure serving with you, Lou. You and I came in together.
That's right.
We ran for, each time together, I felt like you were my running meeting partner this whole time, so.
Yeah, we ran-
I enjoyed being with you.
Three times together, and every time, I don't know why, we always ran with somebody running against us.
Never got a walk.
Never got a walk-in, right. But, yeah, it's been good, and I certainly have enjoyed working with the board, and all the department heads here at town hall, anything I've had to do with them, they've, they've been great. And of course, Mrs. Chilcott. I couldn't have done, done anything without her. Thank you.
Great job.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All right, you there, Matt? You still there, buddy?
Think he may have signed on.
Oh, the phone's still on.
It's still on. Matt, are you still there?
I'm here.
Watching the Red Sox. Matt, are you there, buddy?
Well, this is my rule call. So, my rule call.
Yes.
Yes. And I'm yes, and we'll have to put in his-
President not voting.
President not voting. Well, thank you very much. This concludes Monday, April 30th, 2018, Board of Selectmen meeting. We've covered a lot of our articles and had quite a bit of discussion tonight, and hope to see you at town meeting. Thank you.